I'm gonna admit it.
Just wanna give folks a chance to get their audio connected and make sure everybody's in from faith's end.
We just have one more joining us late here. We're ready.
You're ready?
Yes.
Okay. So this Livingston City Commission meeting on September 20th, 2022 is called to order. Roll call please.
Chair Noots.
Here.
Vice Chair Cale.
Here.
Commissioner Friedman.
Here.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Present.
Commissioner Lyons.
Here.
And we are going to switch seats again, Vice Chair Cale and I, while my eyes are still recovering. So I'll pass the baton like the last couple of meetings and she will run the meeting.
All right. Thank you, Chair Noots. So we will go ahead and move forward with the meeting. So next on the agenda is public comment. This portion of public comment is for items that are not on our agenda this evening. So if you have public comment for things that are not listed on the agenda, you can make that now. Individuals are reminded that public comment should be limited to items over which the city commission has supervision, control jurisdiction, or advisory power. If you have public comment for items not on the agenda this evening, please raise your hand, come off mute, or put your name in the chat. I am seeing none. I'll give one more moment. Any public comments for items not on the agenda this evening? All right. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close general public comment and move on down the agenda. So first we'll start with consent items. Commissioners, do I have a motion for our consent items this evening? Or does anyone like anything pulled from our consent items this evening?
I'll make a motion to prove consent items A, B, C, and D. Second.
I have a motion by Schwartz and a second by Friedman. Roll call please.
Chair Cale.
Vice Chair Cale.
Vice Chair Cale.
Chair David. Four.
Commissioner Freeman.
I think you skipped me.
Oh, I'm sorry. Chair Noots.
Four.
Commissioner Freeman.
Four.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Four.
Commissioner Lyons.
Four.
Motion passes. Now we will move on to proclamations. So this is item A, a proclamation of the City Commission of the City of Livingston, recognizing contributions to our community through acts of service by establishing an annual award from the executive branch of the City of Livingston to be named in the honor and memory of City Manager Michael J. Cardus. I am gonna read this proclamation. I don't know that it got amended correctly in the amendments, but I think I have the right one here. So I'm gonna go ahead and move forward with this one. So proclamation of the City of Livingston City Commission, recognizing contributions to our community through service and establishing an annual award from the executive branch of the City of Livingston to be named in honor and memory of City Manager Michael J. Cardus. Whereas, the executive branch of the City of Livingston, with full support of the Livingston City Commission, seeks to honor, memorialize, and recognize the contributions of City Manager Michael J. Cardus. It does hereby establish the Michael J. Cardus Excellence and Community Service Award to be given annually. Whereas, Michael J. Cardus led his life with unfailing dedication and commitment to the values of service to others, service to his community, and service to our great nation, and dedicated himself both personally and professionally to his faith, family, colleagues, and the City of Livingston. And whereas, Michael J. Cardus lived his life with the highest integrity and honor through decorated service in the United States Air Force, having retired as a lieutenant colonel after 23 years of service and several deployments. And whereas, Michael J. Cardus continued to embody both in his professional and personal life the values of the United States Air Force. Integrity first, service before self, and excellence in all we do. Through his many and lasting contributions as the City Manager of the City of Livingston from April of 2017 until his passing in June of 2022. Now therefore, the executive branch of the City of Livingston, with the support of the City Commission of the City of Livingston, does hereby recognize the Michael J. Cardus Excellence and Community Service Award to be given annually in September by the city's executive branch to individuals or groups who make contributions through integrity, service, and excellence to the community of Livingston. In 2022, the executive branch is awarding this honor to Expedition Church for outstanding commitments to volunteerism and service through their Clean Air Facts Program to reduce wildfire smoke, thousands of volunteer maintenance hours, and improvements to city parks and green spaces, and most recently, the efforts during the Yellowstone flood event in June of 2022. I think we all might need to take a deep breath. I'm gonna open this up for any commissioner comments, or Mrs. Lauer, if you have any comments as well. Chair Noots.
I just wanna start by thanking the staff for such a thoughtful way to memorialize and remember Mr. Cardus. I think this feels really appropriate to the way he conducted himself in our community. And I'm just fondly remembering things he did that he didn't have to do for our community, like teaching kids about government was one of the times I saw him the happiest. It's really fun. And so and I also wanna, you know, really point out that he did talk to me when I was meeting with him about Expedition Church and how much they were doing for our community. So it feels really appropriate also that this is a group that he would also support in everything that this group was doing. So thank you, staff. Thank you, executive branch, for putting this together. I think it's really wonderful. And I look forward to seeing how it goes over the years and who else gets nominated. And I am glad that we're doing this in memory of Michael and also to honor people in our community.
Thank you, Chair Noots. Other commissioners?
Madam Chair.
Yeah, Commissioner Schwartz.
Yeah, I just wanna chime in about Expedition Church as well. They set the bar very, very, very high. And I look forward to people challenging that level of commitment in the years to come. And it's definitely a fitting reward. Named in Michael's honor for the service and dedication he did around this town, besides being a city manager. Thank you. Are you?
Thank you. Other commissioners?
I'll just say, it was Mr. Cardus that set the bar high. And I think the church is trying to match that. And I think that having this award will continue to hopefully inspire such dedication and service throughout the community. So thanks again for putting it together.
Thank you, Commissioner Lyons. I agree with all my fellow commissioners, and I I am glad to see this happen. Thank you to the staff for creating this. And I think it's a wonderful memorandum of Michael, so that we'll get to talk about him every year moving forward. And the great work that he's done and his dedication. For all the dedication to his community and his faith and his church and his family. And we'll get to speak about that every year now, as we move forward. So generations to come will know Michael Cardus's name, and folks can reach to to hit his level of service to our community. So thank you. Thank you to all. All right. We are gonna move forward with a scheduled public comment from Shannon Holm, Public Works Director. Recognition of Darrell Brunson and the volunteers of Expedition Church for Excellence in Community Service. So Shannon can tell us a little bit more about the Expedition Church and all the work that they've done. So I'll look forward to that. Mrs. Lauer, I'll go first.
There you go. All right. Good evening, Madam Vice Chair and members of the commission. Thanks for giving me the opportunity to just give you a little synopsis of the impact that Darrell's had. In times like this, I always kind of think, what would Mike do? What would Mike do? And Mike introduced me to Darrell last July. And Darrell was looking for projects. And in my first meeting with Darrell, I said, are you sure you want to get into this? Do you know what you're getting into? And he said, I'm ready. And I'll tell you, that first introduction to Darrell, I had heard about him for the previous two and a half years, and I was really looking forward to the opportunity to actually get to meet him. And fortunately, I made a friend for life in doing that. But you know, we have projects, as you know, as commission, and going through the budget process and hearing public works updates, we have projects that are five, 10 pages long. And when I sat down with him back in 2021, I gave him eight projects that all had a budgetary value of over $8,000. And he didn't blink his eye at any of those. In that first meeting, we got to get to know each other a little bit better. And I think it's wonderful that Livingston is a melting pot community and where you can have a boy from Kentucky and a boy from Alabama put their heads together and make our county and city a better place. And that's what we started at that first meeting. I had the fortunate it was fortunate to be able to actually spend an afternoon with Darrell. In early November, we drove around and looked at all the city parks. And I showed him the areas where the projects were at. And we continued to stay in touch throughout the winter through text messaging. I consider Darrell a text buddy of mine now. I don't think I go more than 10 or 15 minutes to respond to his texts, and he's about the same with mine. So we're close. When we really got to work was this past spring, and Darrell's group was out here in full force in March and early April. And they started tackling city projects and beautifying our city parks by re-roofing the building in Sacagawea Park. They painted the swimming pool, changing room building. They put new steps at the ban shell. They totally cleaned and manicured the lagoon in preparation for the fishing derby. And they also helped move 40 cubic yards of decomposed granite around the skate park to help landscape that. Another big project they did was the fan filters to help people with respiratory issues. And this is just a small glimpse of what they do for our community. So we really hit the momentum in May, and things were going great. And then in early June, July 3rd, or June 3rd, as a matter of fact, it was Mike's sudden passing. Darrell reached out to me immediately and offered to help out, be a person to talk to, to help me with my grieving and my staff's grieving. And for that, I'm forever grateful. We didn't have much time to do any healing, and we had an unprecedented flood on 10 days later. And that's where Darrell really rose to the top again. And I dedicated Darrell on June 13th as the Director of the Sandbag and Flood Relief Efforts for the City of Livingston and surrounding area. And his group, along with a lot of other volunteers in our community, filled and placed 14,000 sandbags on June 13th alone. I stayed in constant contact with Darrell for the next 10 days, specifically working on where he could help our community with flood-related issues. I don't know if you've been fortunate to be with Darrell, but he has an aura about him that really, for me, has a calming effect. He has such a positive energy. And being a public works director and dealing with your boss's sudden passing in a flood 10 days later, it was reassuring to me to actually be in contact with him on a constant basis throughout that time period. And it really helped me get through it. And I know he doesn't know that, but he has that effect on me, and I think he has that effect on a lot of people. It's really hard to put in words what impact he's had on our community. And I mentioned this earlier, but we've been giving him thanks for the last hour. But I could look at my text messages, and all he did was thank me and the city for giving him opportunities for projects to improve and make our community a better place. And I think that just says a lot about him. And I guess in closing, I just wanna thank Mike Cardus for introducing me to Darrell. And there's not a better person in this world that deserves the first ever Michael J. Cardus Service Award. Thank you, and I yield.
You wanna introduce him?
Yeah. Darrell is here.
Yeah. Please stand up and be recognized.
Thank you, Commissioner Schwartz, for facilitating Darrell getting recognized there. Thank you. Any other comments or questions to Shannon or to Darrell while we've got them? Commissioner?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I would like to congratulate Darrell. He sets the bar awful high. We're calling yours, but that's the beautiful part of it. And I'm sure he can probably get up higher and it's good that he's always around. Things do not stay quiet. And we run it, so we really appreciate you being here and making the choice of Livingston. And just when your family just give it their best that we can and the support that you deserve.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Freeman. Other commissioners? Chair Noots?
I feel like I have a memory of Darrell, maybe his first month in town. I feel like I got a business card from Darrell. Probably like half of Livingston got a business card from Darrell. Darrell knows Livingston. And I just really appreciate that you, when you got here, you just jumped into our community and made it your own and just joined us in the work. So thank you. And I'm so grateful for your service to our community. And I'm also glad that you were awarded this and recognized. And thanks, Shannon, for elaborating on the acts of Darrell and the church.
Thank you, Chair Noots. Other commissioners? I'll just wrap us up and thank Darrell and the church and his members for all the hard work. I certainly have seen them out and about painting buildings and doing all this stuff that we so desperately need, and we really appreciate it. So thank you so much to you and your church and for helping clean the air in people's homes when we have the wildfire smoke. So thank you so very much. And we really appreciate you, and it's an honor that you were able to get this very first Michael J. Cardus Award. So thank you and congratulations. All right. We'll go ahead and move on down our agenda this evening. We have no public hearings. No ordinances. We do have a resolution. So we will start with Resolution Number 5065, a resolution by the City of Livingston City Commission, authorizing the interim city manager to sign a three-year memorandum of understanding with Park County Rural Fire District Number One to provide funding for a shared resource dedicated to enhancing the training capabilities for both Park County Rural Fire One and Livingston Fire Rescue. Mrs. Lauer.
Thank you. This particular MOU has been born out of a recognized need for both rural fire and City of Livingston Fire Rescue to enhance our training capabilities beyond what we currently have. The state of Montana, while providing basic firefighting training and EMS training, does not provide the state-of-the-art training that our folks need, quite frankly. As we've seen with the large fires we've had recently, and this wasn't in the works before that, but this obviously made that even more important. We need to concentrate tactics and skills and learn the newest and latest state-of-the-art firefighting skills so that we can protect life and property, as well as assure that our firefighters are going into these scenes that are very dangerous, obviously. If you saw some of the pictures of our white timber, it was a pretty big fire and had the potential to spread to buildings outside of that vicinity because of the wind on that particular day. So what we have done in working with rural fire is come up with a way. Neither of our organizations can afford the caliber of trainer that we need, quite honestly. It would not be an effective recruitment if we were not able to kind of partner, gain some synergy around this, and bring this kind of training and service, frankly, to all of Park County. We have more rural urban interface wildfire risk, continued drought. Our winds are not beneficial to us in terms of fighting fires generally. So we need to take an aggressive approach to be certain that we are protecting the life and property of our citizens, as well as protecting the health and well-being of our firefighters. So what this MOU does is cost share the expense of a high-caliber trainer to bring them not only to Livingston but to Park County. This would be a rural fire employee under the direction of Chief Babcock's, but obviously available to the city for joint training, specialized trainings, any of the things that we may need in the course of developing a strategic emergency response of the absolute highest caliber. You can see towards the bottom third of the MOU, there is a financial commitment on our part. The one for the balance of this fiscal year will depend partially on when we actually hire someone and get them in the chair. So it may be a little bit less. I don't necessarily anticipate having someone here before January 1st, but we might. Always a possibility. In the second year, the commitment is $45,000. That would be half of salary and part of benefits as well. And then in fiscal year '25, the full allotment would be $50,000, which again is approximately half of the fully loaded cost of both salary and benefits for that individual. I think this is a great partnership and a way for us to really sync our responses because rural fire and Livingston Fire, as well as Livingston Police, and even Park County Sheriff's Office to some degree, are all responding together within the city limits on these large events, especially at our white timber and anything up on the highway. It's literally all of us going together and training together in a more aggressive manner, and learning state-of-the-art techniques will only serve to keep us safer and also help provide us with a leg up in recruiting. These firefighters that want to be joining Livingston Fire Rescue or Park County Rural are gonna want to learn state-of-the-art techniques. We don't want to be behind in that. We want to attract top talent, especially as we look at retirements that may be coming up within either or both organizations. So with that, I would entertain any questions about this particular memorandum of understanding and any questions about the program that you all may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Lauer. Commissioners, questions? Any questions? Chair Noots?
Yeah, I just have a question about, so it looks like in the memorandum of understanding, we'd be contributing to salary. I know that our fire department is union, like we have to go through union negotiations, but this would all be, oh, I lost you. There you are. You see me? Can you hear me?
Yeah.
The screen did a thing. Okay. So are the benefits for this position and like all the, I don't know if Park County Rural is part of a union or not?
They are not. They are a separate organization.
Okay. So like the benefit aspect would be covered by the by Park County Rural Fire, and we would just be contributing salary?
Yes.
Okay. That's what I was curious to know. Thank you.
This is similar to some of the arrangements we have with Park County, like for the Sanitarian, GIS, IT. We share some salaries in that regard, too.
But those are usually through the
Through the compact.
Agreement. Yeah, through the compact or, yeah. So this is the same, just a different partner, the same concept, different partner.
Correct.
Thank you. That was my only question. I do wanna say I do like that Fire Chief Chabloski will be in on the hiring, though. I think that's great to have that represented. I yield.
Thank you, Chair Noots. Other commissioners' questions? I will go, Mrs. Lauer, can you talk to us a little bit about the job description that's in the packet? It's, this looks like a completely different job description than what we're talking about.
This is actually Park County Rural's template for job description. So we're gonna work off of that and to insert a different title and be the requirements that we have outlined in the final paragraph of that MOU on page one to bring that up to the standards that we want for that trainer, which is a condition of our financial contribution.
Okay, because, yeah, and even just the essential duties, like
They are. It's a completely different job description. It's just their template for what they use.
I just wanna make sure that that's the key. Doesn't seem right.
I'm sorry, what are you talking about? I don't see a template.
There is a job, there's a job description on page
Thirty-three.
Three.
My packet isn't My packet ends on an MOU in this section. I don't have this in my packet.
I can forward it to you on email, Chair Noots. It's just a template. It's not the final one, anyway.
There is Chair Noots.
Am I the only?
Does anybody else not? Other commissioners, do you have page 33 in your packet? I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, I do.
I have a clarifying question, then.
Yes.
So this is not in my packet. So I didn't have time to review it. It sounds like it's a template, and it's a draft. So I wanted to get and it's a draft, so I wanted to get, by Sheriff Kell, potentially an opinion, a legal opinion to make sure that I like, I'm just voting on the resolution. I don't have to worry about the application because I'm concerned when I don't have things as a commissioner before I vote.
Mrs. Lowey, we're looking for a legal opinion, so if Courtney, Mr. Wellam would like to answer, if that's okay.
Chair Newt, I'm forwarding it to you on email right now.
This is why we, that's difficult for me with my vision impairments right now to read a document on the spot is not something I'm physically capable.
No, it is.
Which is why I need the things in advance printed in a way that I can access the information.
Well, I'll reformat it so it's the way you would like it. That'll just take me another moment.
I just won't have time to read it by Sheriff Kell.
You know, the job, the job description really is not key for the MOU at this point. The MOU itself is, is really just the fiscal commitment to the position and it outlines what, what our terms for that fiscal commitment is in terms of certifications. So, that's really the only thing we have to insert into whatever job description Park County Rural wants to as long as our requirements for the funding are in there, it's fine. That's correct.
Okay, so we're not, we're obviously not voting on that, the specific job description, which is in the packet today. Okay, thank you for that clarification. Okay. Let's, now ask one more time, any other further clarifying questions? Okay, seeing none. Do I have a motion and then we can move to public comment?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number Five Zero Six Five, second.
I have a motion by Schwartz and a second by Friedman. Now, let's go ahead and open this up to public comments. If you'd like to make any public comment on this item, please come off mute, raise your hand, put your name in the chat. I am not seeing any public comment. I'll ask one more time, public comment on this agenda item. Okay, I've seen none. I'm going to go ahead and close public comments on this item. Commissioners, discussion, deliberation? Any discussion? None, okay. All right, if we have no, no discussion or deliberation, we can go ahead and move to about roll call, please.
Vice Chair Kell? Or Chair Newt? Or Commissioner Freeman?
Or
Commissioner Schwartz?
Or
Commissioner Lyons?
Or
Motion passive. All right. Moving on to sorry folks, one second. We're now moving on to action items, so this will be action item A.
If I may, Chair Kell, the Mint has actually canceled this event, so we can pull this, they're not, they're not ready to proceed with an event of this size, so we can pull it off the, off the agenda and move to B.
Well, that's kind of a bummer. I thought it sounded like a fun event.
Just got an email about an hour ago, so.
All right, let me move forward. Give me one moment, please. All right. Okay. Action item B. Discuss, approve, deny, recommendation from Conservation Board to remove Alexis Van Pernas from seat on City Conservation Board due, due to absenteeism per board bylaw.
This has been submitted by the Conservation Board in compliance with their bylaws. I believe Alexis may have also moved out of the area and is no longer able to participate or fulfill her obligations on the Conservation Board.
Okay, thank you. And I will just say, I have heard the same thing, Mrs. Lowey. I believe that Alexis has moved, maybe gone to college. I'm not positive, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I'm not sure, but
Okay. Commissioners, any questions, any clarifying questions? And I don't see anybody from the Conservation Board here with us this evening. Seeing no questions, motion?
Make a motion to approve consent item. I mean, action item B, or the third.
So, I have a motion by Schwartz and a second by Friedman. We'll open this up to public comments, any public comments on action item B? Raise your hands, come off mute, shame on chat. I am seeing none. All right, I'm going to go ahead and close public comments on action item B. Commissioners, discussion deliberation? Think that. Roll call, please.
Vice Chair Kell? Or Chair Newt? Or Commissioner Freeman?
Or
Commissioner Schwartz?
Or
Commissioner Lyons?
Or
Motion passive. All right, moving on to action item C. Discuss, approve, deny, submitting a letter of support for the High Speed Rail Alliance. Mrs. Lowey.
Thank you. This is just a letter of support that has been requested by the High Speed Rail Alliance. This is a partnership to bring High Speed Rail from Chicago forward here. They are going out for some grant funding through the Federal Department of Transportation. So, this letter is being addressed to the Honorable Pete Buttigieg, who is our Secretary of Transportation at the federal level. This partners with our, our recent joining of the Big Sky Passenger Rail Authority and just further acknowledges our commitment to bringing High Speed Rail and passenger train into our region. And this is just a standard letter of support for you all to vote on and sign. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Lowey. Clarifying question? Chair Newt?
Yeah, I was just curious. So, did they reach out to the executive branch and ask for our support? Or I'm just curious how the, how we got looked in.
This came across as part of, coming from the Big Sky Rail Alliance, who has done a letter of support as well and is asking for each of its members to do individual letters of support.
Thank you.
Any other clarifying questions? All right, seeing none, do you have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve action item. I've lost that page in my, in my packet. C, action item C. Thank you.
I'll second.
All right, I have a motion by Lyons and a second by Schwartz. We'll go ahead and open this item up for public comments. Any public comments and action item C? Come off mute, raise your hand, shame in the chat. I see none. All right, I'm going to go ahead and close public comments. On action MC. Commissioners, thoughts, deliberation? Commissioner Lyons?
Just want to, I mean, th, th, these are things that we covered when we committed to the Big Sky Passenger Rail Authority, but Livingston's a river town, it's a mountain town, and it's, it's a railroad town. And originally, that railroad carried people and that was why people existed in, well, white people existed in Livingston. And I think that it's, it's important to, to the future of Livingston that we, that we reinstate passenger service. And I think this is, I think it's great to, to be full-faith players with the Big Sky Passenger Rail Authority and be great to see rail becoming a more important mode in our, in our region and across the country.
Thank you, Commissioner Lyons. Other commissioners?
All right, I'll just say I agree with Commissioner Lyons and it would really be, would be incredible to be able to see people moving through Livingston on a train again. And how wonderful that connection would be for folks to get across Montana into other places in the country and be able to do that right from Livingston. So, this is, this is an exciting proposition. Any other comments? All right, seeing none, roll call, please.
Vice Chair Kell? Or Chair Newt? Or Commissioner Freeman?
Or
Commissioner Schwartz?
Or
Commissioner Lyons?
Or
Motion passive. All right, moving on to action item D. Discuss, approve, deny. Approved payment for invoice received from Ergen Alexander Zadik PC totaling twelve thousand ninety-three dollars and four cents for services of outside counsel for the City Commission exceeding this commission's personal service budget for FY twenty-one twenty-two. I know I, I did crossover with Attorney Crowe B. Just today, and she said that she was, she had made sure that all of our commissioners have seen the unredacted copy of this bill. So, we should just be moving forward on a vote to approve payment. Commissioners, any questions?
Oh. I don't have a clarifying question.
All right, if we have no question, do I have a motion? Do we need to go public, motion, public comment?
Yeah, I can make a motion.
Or do we have a, do we need clarification on something?
I do.
Okay, Mrs. Lowey, go ahead.
I just, I just do need to point out for the record that the contract with this particular law firm, according to our records, began on April twenty-second. So, there are some charges prior to that date of when the contract was actually voted on. So, in order to be true to our fiscal requirements, any motion that you make to pay this is going to need to either include or exclude at, at your discretion the charges that are prior to the contract. Thank you.
Okay. So, we will need a motion that will either include all the charges, I guess, or not all the charges. Do you have a motion?
Sure, I'll make a motion to approve payment of invoices received from Ergen Alexander Zadik for services provided in the let's see, beginning in April thirteenth.
Thank you.
Row. Is that enough to say through, starting in April thirteenth? And that's my motion.
Do I have a second? I'll second it. To move things along. So, I have a motion by Newt and a second by Kell. So, let's go ahead and open it up to public comment. Do I have any public comments on action item D? Mr. Manning, full name and address, please.
Warren, maybe three ten South H Street, Livingston. I happen to have a redacted copy of the law firm's statement. All of the billing prior to the meeting, which totals eight hundred and sixty dollars, all involves Chair Newt's and the initiating of the the retention vote. After that, the, the meeting with the retention vote was an additional four hundred and thirty. So, anyway, we have eight hundred and sixty dollars prior to that date. The legalities of that. I'm not a lawyer, so I don't know what they are, but Chair Newt's obviously on her own pursued this path without an approval from the commission. I think that information should be added or should be included in the decision of how to, how to handle that particular amount of billing. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comment, public comment? Larry Stevenson, I saw you come off mute, full name and address, please, and go ahead and make your comment.
Larry Stevenson, twenty-six Sapphire Flat Trail, south of Livingston. And it's really difficult to respond or to understand what exactly you're voting on without knowing exactly what the taxpayers are being asked to pay for here. So, I, I would again, and I've asked before, like to hear what were the services rendered, what was the result, and exactly what was the subject and what was the conclusion? So, that's, that's the end of my comment.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Feel free to come off mute, mute, raise your hand, put your name in the chat. I am seeing no other public comment. So, we'll go ahead and close public comments.
I didn't hear an answer to Mr. Stevenson's question at all.
Mr. Maybe, we don't respond directly to questions during public comments. We will go to deliberation and discussion, but during public comment, we don't respond directly. That's not how Robert Rule Boarder works. All right, I'm going to close public comment. And now, Commissioner, discussion, deliberation.
Vice Chair Kell?
Chair Newt?
Yeah, I was mischaracterized or perhaps misunderstood. So, I just want to make sure that I can clarify those three dates with respect to the rights of privacy, which is a constitutional right in the state of Montana. When the commission was in closed session, the commission, all commissioners, asked for more information and asked me to bring more information to the commission in closed session, which is what I did. As I've said before, at a public meeting, I was direct, I went to local government center, was directed to League of City and Towns, and was directed to MMIA, which directed me squarely with a name to Jordan Crosby. So, that is the path that I followed. The commission knew and supported this gathering of information, which doesn't require a vote to get more information, which is how I got Attorney Cross- which is how I got Attorney Crosby's information. When the commission wanted more information, and when I was directed to Attorney Crosby, she requested and required background information on what led me to meet with her and what the led, led the commission to seek more information about outside counsel. So the reason that she needed information was to see, one, if there were any conflicts of interest for her, because she is an attorney who works with many other governments um across the state. Two, to make sure that she was qualified to bring us information that we needed for things that I cannot talk about because of the constitutional right to privacy. And that's what you're seeing in the billable hours on the thirteenth, fourteenth, and the sixteenth. She also had to put together information for the commission for something for us to vote on. That was the other thing that she did during that time, so that we could even have something to vote on. So as to the question is, you know, who's the lawyer and is this legal? Attorney Crosby is a lawyer. She provides counsel to elected officials and commissions and cities all over the state of Montana. We are about one of her clients, um and one of the clients of this firm. And this is the typical billing. I will say it's not typical that staff wants a redacted copy of the bill, but I will say that this process is typical as she outlines it, and she's never had any issue with any other government, to my knowledge. She said that she's never had an issue with this in this state before, that it's just standard billing practice for her firm. So I hope that that clarifies and helps people understand, especially you commissioners, helps understand um what those were. I hope that jogs your memory to where we were in the process and what was needed for our closed meeting session um and our open sessions as well. That that required some information gathering as well as legal advice and legal opinions to even move it to a point where we could have something to vote on at all. I keep losing my Zoom, are you guys there?
We're here, we can see.
Thanks, they're like my screens are doing something on their own. So, okay, that is all that I have. I hope that answers everyone's questions. And in regards to what was it about? The constitution doesn't allow us to have everything open. That's the right to privacy sometimes exceeds the public's right to know, and this is one of those pieces.
Commissioners? Any other deliberation, discussion? All right. Seeing none, uh with uh Commissioner Schwartz, I thought your hand moved to the map.
Yeah, there we go. Wrong mouse. Um, too many of them laying around here. I just want to go on record saying I, I was um against this, not from the start, but um once I did a little more researching, I still believe we could have handled this in-house um without going to all this trouble and expense. I don't, I don't think we, we worked hard enough as a commission to address the the questions that were, that did arise and uh to ju- just going on record uh that I did vote against uh the retention of these services and uh I yield.
Other commissioners? I, I'm just going to say that we voted on this, we voted for a service, and now we need to pay for the service in which we pay for, or that we voted on and um acquire, and we got those services. And so I think that's what we need to do. Uh so I will leave it at that. Any other comments? All right, seeing none, uh roll call.
Vice Chair Kail. For? Uh Commissioner, Chair Newt, excuse me, for? Commissioner Friedman?
Again.
Commissioner Schwartz?
No.
Commissioner Lyons?
Or?
Motion passes. All right, moving along in the agenda. All right, last item on the agenda this evening, uh action item E. Discuss approved deny, setting dates for city manager finalist interviews for October eleventh, twelfth, and thirteenth, twenty-twenty-three with GMP Consulting. I'm going to maybe, Miss, I pushed it Chair Newt first, and then we'll come back to you. Um I know that Chair News, Newt has had discussions with Greg Proffman um about this action item um and would love to hear some of the updates that, that they've come together with. So Chair Newt?
Yeah, I, I think uh since it was scheduling, the commissioners were in on most of the emails, but there was a lot of back and forth. Thank you, Mrs. Lowry, for um playing scheduled Tetris with the commissioners. And the week, actually the week that was posted in the agenda here, the twelfth, the eleventh, twelfth, and thirteenth actually does not work for all the commissioners, so that week is out. Um Mr. Proffman was really concerned, as I think we all are, really concerned about losing um good candidates or qualified candidates for Livingston. So the next week is the week that we've slated, and I do see that Mrs. Lowry isn't on that email as well. So it looks like um the beginning of the week is when he expects to be able to schedule some interviews. And then the there'll be more details to come at the end of September when he works um through the process of the commission of the work session. And Vice Chair Kail and Mrs. Lowry may have additional information to add to that, but that's the update, the most recent update that I have.
Thank you, Mrs. Lowry.
The, the most recent update I have, and I think everyone has now confirmed is the seventeenth and eighteenth would be a go for everyone with Commissioner Lyons available by Zoom. I'm getting nods, so I think we're good. Okay. Just want to get that confirmed. We can get it in the schedule with uh Mr. Proffman and get the process moving forward.
Commissioners in the uh at City Hall, are, I, I got a thumbs up from uh Commissioner Lyons and Commissioner Newt. Are, are you all good with those dates as well, the seventeenth and the eighteenth for manager, city manager um interviews?
Yeah, Mel and I uh are available those days.
Okay. Great.
I just wanna, I would add one more thing. It sounds like we want to be really blocking out those days, a good chunk of the day until we can um get the times honed in, remembering there might be, I don't know, four or five candidates. I'm not sure how many will get scheduled, but it won't be a small amount, and there will be much um conversation for the commission and the contractors, Greg and Ted, I believe, will be really leading us through the process and keeping us on track, and it'll be fast-moving and long days. Um Mrs. Lowry, is there anything you would add to that? I, I just want to make sure people aren't scheduling little blocks of time, but really.
No, I, I would, I would concur to just block both days in their entirety. Um there may also be an evening reception, is my understanding from Mr. Proffman on one of those days for all of the candidates and the commission and the public, kind of everyone, to do a meet and greet, so um. But more to come with, with firm dates after they do their first round of interviews, which I believe is beginning of next week.
I also want to add that on the eighteenth is the city commission meeting day, just um we're aware of that. But yeah, blocking out the day, so thank you.
I thank you for bringing that up, Commissioner Schwartz. That's something that I did mention to Mr. Proffman, and he suggested we might consider not having a commission meeting that night, because it will be potentially too much, and we might be going into the evening with the consulting firm. So I think I don't know the process of canceling a meeting or moving a meeting, but I think that'll be important to
Um, we will have, if I may, we will have a very tight deadline on a subdivision that'll be coming before you on October fourth. So that final day to do that is October eighteenth, is the sixtieth day for that. So if on the fourth it is not resolved, you would need to schedule a special meeting if you want additional information or, or, or some other clarifications with that subdivision. You would have to schedule a special meeting prior to the eighteenth in order for us to meet that deadline.
So should we just keep that in our back pocket?
Just, just in the back of your mind, if it, if everything goes through fine on the fourth, it's not a big deal. Um but if there is something there that you're seeing that you may want some additional information, we'll, we will have to schedule that before the eighteenth.
Okay. Of course, yeah, okay, so let's just keep that commissioners in the back of our minds um and be prepared to think that we might have to sneak in an extra meeting um somewhere in, in that timeframe. All right, so we don't need to vote on this. Um this was just a scheduling exercise. Unless any other of the commissioners have any other uh questions, thoughts that they want to bring up around this before we move on. Okay, seeing none. That moves us to city manager comment.
Thank you. Just wanted to give a shout out to all of our first responders yesterday. You'll know that we had an incident down in the valley that led to a lockdown of all of the schools in the county on very short notice. While, you know, obviously when we're doing things on very short notice, in that way, communication can always be a little bit better. First and foremost, our um concern was securing the scenes so that we knew um that the kids in our schools were safe. The individual has um been apprehended, turned self-in, however you want to, want to look at that. And um I just wanted to give a shout out to all of our first responders, our law enforcement folks that did an outstanding job with not a lot of information and made great, great gut calls in the course of that day. Also wanted to, to let everyone know that we have um completed hiring of seven new positions, not new, but vacant positions. Um so foreign public works, our uh public works director will be starting sometime in mid-November. We have secured housing. I feel like that is the victory of the month around here. Um and we have two new law enforcement officers that will be joining us over the course of the next two to three weeks. Um once we get through standard background checks and, and all of those things that, that we do before we onboard law enforcement. So we're uh, we're actually doing well with hiring.
Miss Lowry, that was planning director you were talking about, not public works director, right?
Yes, oh my God, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
No. Oopsie. Glad Shannon's not on. Um, the uh, yes, the planning director, thank you. I yield.
All right, thank you. Uh good work. Uh city commissioner comments? Commissioner Lyons?
Uh I don't think that I have anything of value to share this evening, so I'll pass it on. Thanks for, for leading another meeting, Vice Chair Kail.
Thank you, Commissioner Lyons. Okay, oh, Mrs. Lowry, I'm coming back. Looks like you had one. We'll, we'll circle back. Go ahead.
I just wanted to wish Commissioner Friedman a wonderful eighty-seventh birthday tomorrow, so happy birthday, Mel.
Happy birthday, Mel.
And now we sing, no, I'm just kidding.
We'll bury him, Mel.
We've got cookies here, here for him, yeah. Cookie. Yeah.
All right, uh Commissioner Schwartz?
Um yeah, I just want to give a shout out to the executive branch of the city of Livingston. Sometimes don't miss the leadership. Yeah, whatever. Um in uh coming up with this uh award, uh the Michael J. Cardo's Excellent in Community Service Award, how fitting and how appropriate and uh why didn't I think of that? But that's why we have you guys, so thank you, I appreciate it. I yield.
Thank you. Commissioner Schwartz?
You mean Friedman?
Or excuse me, Commissioner Friedman? Yeah.
Yeah, I want to do. Yeah. Thank you for this, yeah, I feel very honored. It was good to see such a positive uh group of people here during the first award of this coming up with this, and I just want to congratulate the uh leadership to do it. And the bar is set pretty high, but as people, it's always good to see people step up, and it was really a need for that during this period. And I want to thank them an awful lot for doing that, so and continue on in the years. I think we've got a very good example of uh what we're looking for, and uh I appreciate everybody's help in this matter. I yield.
Thank you. Chair Newt?
Yeah, I just want to agree with um my fellow commissioners and also recognize that the city staff has a more of a permanent tribute that will be living in City Hall. Um a little, I think there's going to be like a plaque where groups or names can be added every year and a picture of Michael. So I think it's really wonderful that we're finding a way to help his memory live on Livingston and in City Hall. And the bar is also high for photos in City Hall, so it's not a small thing to add to those, to that lovely, like the lovely decor. I'm really looking forward to seeing it, so thank you, Mrs. Lowry and Jack, for doing that. Um I also wanted to say, I don't remember if we, have you all heard the update on applicants for the position? Have we, have we done that yet in comments? I'm seeing no nods. Okay, so you remember that there were twenty-five applicants for the city manager position, which is about double what Mr. Proffman had predicted, and he said that there might be three to four candidates that they would potentially interview. There were nine candidates that um Mr. Proffman and his staff ended up starting with and narrowing down um for the final that will come to the city of Livingston for interviews. So I think it's really exciting. Um he gave me teasers of some of the candidates, and it sounds like we're going to have really great conversations with people that are interested in our community, and I'm really excited for the commission and staff and our community to meet these people. Um and I believe we should be watching our inboxes later this week, potentially. You might be able to get something to us as soon as the end of this week. I would expect it might go to Mrs. Lowry before it comes to us, but I would keep an eye out on your inboxes for more information. So I think it'll be coming, and it sounds like it's a lot of positives. A lot of positive things happening in terms of the potential for our next city manager, so I just wanted to share that, good news. And I yield.
Thank you, Chair Newt. Uh I, I don't have much this evening either, um other than thank you for the staff for putting together the, the award um for Michael. I think it was very important. Um and I'm, I'm happy to, to see his memory move forward um through time uh as a, as a part of our city. Um I am going to thank all of our first responders and firefighters uh for all the hard work that they've uh incurred these last couple of weeks with a couple of pretty good fires and um and then yesterday, so thank you to, to all of them, and, and hopefully we can get a great trainer in place to help them um be even better at the, at the great job that they're doing now. Um so uh that, I'm looking forward to that. Um I think that that's all I have this evening. Thank you all uh for attending and, and being here tonight and uh gosh, we did this without having to take a break, so nice work, folks. Um, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Shout it out, Mel, so moved. Second.
I have a motion by Friedman and a second by Schwartz. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Good night.
This meeting of the city, the Livingston City Commission is adjourned at six forty-five PM. Thanks, Doc. Have a good evening.